Okay. All right, we'll call the special meeting February 25th, 2020 to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right, thank you. I called the special meeting because Friday night I received notification that Costa Mesa had filed a lawsuit against the United States and the state of California dealing with the potential removal of coronavirus patients from Northern California and placing them at the Fairview Development Center. And over the weekend, City of Newport Beach filed an amicus brief with the court that was cited heavily by the plaintiffs at the hearing yesterday. At the conclusion of the hearing yesterday, the judge kept her temporary restraining order in place and joining the transfer of patients who have tested positive for the coronavirus or have been exposed to coronavirus to Fairview through next Monday. I have called the special meeting so that the city council can do its primary duty, which is to maintain the health and welfare of our residents, and that is exactly what we're going to be doing. So with that, I'll open this to public comment. Do I, we have public comment today?
Thank you. David Tanner. Mr. Mayor, may I make a non-agenda item brief comment at this time?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to request the city council instruct staff and the planning commission to provide analysis recommendations and their positions on housing stimulus and affordability matters brought before the planning commission and the city council. This would benefit both the public and the city council by promoting a better understanding the effects of these laws on the city and their adverse impacts on the quality of our lives. Last week, the planning commission heard a local coastal plan implementation plan amendment dealing with accessory dwelling units. While this action was not subject to CEQA, no analysis of the environmental effects on the community was provided, no opinion whether this was a good or bad, whether this was good or bad for the city was provided, no discussion of its relationship to the general plan or its update was provided, nor were any alternative paths forward provided. By instructing staff and the planning commission to provide analysis, recommendations, and their positions, it will help the public and the city council find solutions. It will also send a signal to concerned citizens who seek to protect Newport from the devastating effects of these laws. Last week, the signal was clear. Staff conceded there was nothing they could or wanted to do. For all we know, staff thinks these laws are good for the city. The planning commission felt this was not their responsibility and was urged to approve the local coastal plan amendment by staff and the attorney present for the planning commission. They were told there was no reason not to move the matter to the city council for consideration. So I'd like to enter that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neil and members of the council. The agenda I saw for this meeting posted yesterday said you were inviting public comments on the consent calendar, so I actually came to comment on that, but if this is not the appropriate time, I can easily await.
Well, maybe I can ask the city attorney. So, Mr. Harpey?
You can comment on agenda or non-agenda items, but it's a special meeting.
It's a special meeting, so if you'd like to, you can comment on them because it's a non-agenda item.
Yes. You do have on tonight's agenda, on the consent calendar, what apparently is a rather controversial item, number four, about short-term lodging. And I see it's generated a great deal of interest. You have a lot of comment letters. I'm very happy to see that because the interval between the first reading of an ordinance and the second, that's exactly what it's intended for, for public review, criticism, comments, improvements. I do believe the ordinance before you tonight, although the agenda tonight says it's a second reading, is actually a first reading because there was some language that was added to the ordinance that was not presented to the public. Literally what the words were going to be in the ordinance at the last meeting, it was added by staff after the meeting. And the words are important, as I can explain to you this evening. And I believe the ordinance has additional problems. There's an interesting letter among the comments from an attorney in Corona Del Mar. She's pointing out that it's probably problematic for you to impose different rules on identically zoned properties on the north side and the south side of Pacific Coast Highway just because you can. You would probably need some special finding, that there was a special nuisance on one side that didn't exist on the other. She's pointing out it's a little difficult for the public to understand that the short-term lodging is not a property right when our zoning code clearly indicates and tells the public that we do have a right for short-term lodging in these areas. She's also pointing out there may have been some council members participating in the discussion who may have a financial interest in the outcome of the ordinance, which is a problem. And as I pointed out, the compliance, the whole thing seems to be opening the city to a lot of unwanted and lengthy litigation, including regarding the Coastal Act, because we have, in our implementation plan, an occupancy level, it's different than the one that you're enacting here. So this ordinance seems to have a lot of problems. Perhaps it needs some more amendment tonight at the first reading if you actually want to go ahead with it, but I'll probably have more to say about it then. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right, seen none, we'll bring it back. Mr. Harpey.
Thank you. The city council meeting closed session with legal counsel discuss possible initiation of litigation and related to the city of Costa Mesa versus United States of America case. Thank you.
Thank you. We stand in recess. Okay. Good evening. We just need to finish up a special meeting real quickly, so, Mr. Harpey, is there a closed session report?
There is a closed session report, Mayor O'Neil. In regards to agenda item number 4A, the city of Costa Mesa versus United States of America, a motion was made by Mayor O'Neil and seconded by Councilmember Heardman to ratify past filings and continue to support the city of Costa Mesa and Mayor Katrina Foley as amicus in their legal action to restrain and join the United States of America, Department of Health and Human Services, United States Air Force, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the state of California, the Fairview Development Center, the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, and the California Department of General Services from transporting or housing those persons infected by or exposed to the coronavirus to the city of Costa Mesa until it is shown there is an adequate facility for housing these patients. All council members voted in favor of the motion.
Thank you. We stand in adjournment of the special meeting, and we will be starting the study session in just a moment. Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome to the February 25th, 2020 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right. On to current business. Item number one, clarification of items on the consent calendar. Mr. Heardman.
I have none.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have an item. Item number four relating to the ordinance to update the Newport Beach municipal code for short-term lodging. As a result of the plentiful volume of public comments the council has received in the last two weeks on this item, highlighting very good comments, constructive input, highlighting some potential technical adjustments that our subcommittee would like to further review, I am going to make a motion at the regular session that we refer this back to the subcommittee, the ad hoc committee, and we will not be discussing the matter tonight. The purpose of me announcing it now if people are, will be planning to come, if they're listening, this is a consent item that will be making a motion if it is adopted to refer this item back for further review.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
None.
Ms. Brenner?
None.
Mr. Duffield?
None.
Mr. Avery?
None.
All right, and I have none. All right, so we'll move on to item number two, the presentation to Peter Clark, the 2019 Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard of the Year. Mr. Avery, would you like to come up and do the introductions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, you know what? For the purposes of being at home, we need you at the mic. Thank you.
Thanks very much. My name is Mike Ure. I'm the training captain for the Newport Beach Lifeguards and also the supervisor for the junior lifeguard program. Thank you, city council, for supporting our program, number one, and also supporting the Junior Lifeguard of the Year award. This is a tough award to give out because we have 1,350 kids in our program, and after talking to all of our instructors, it was a clear choice. Peter Clark is our lifeguard, Junior Lifeguard of the Year. Peter, if you could stand up and...
All right.
Just a little background on Peter. He has been in the program since he was nine years old, and in those years, he's consistently shown like an eagerness to learn, a never-give-up attitude, and always upholding like the pride that we ask him to do in junior lifeguards and representing our program. As he got older, Peter developed into kind of a natural mentor. All his instructors over the years have come back, came to me and told me little bits and stories about him. I wasn't there as a junior guard instructor all these years, but talking to him, it was super interesting. As a younger guard, a junior guard, he would help out the kids who are even younger than him, finish, complete the long-distance swims they do out in the ocean, help in the surf line and along the competition routes that we do. Even as a younger junior guard, he's always been a consistent role model. When I asked some of the instructors about Peter Clark, who is Peter's Peter Clark, several of them right away mentioned helpful, a role model, a team player, and a waterman. Pretty good, pretty good descriptors. And he embodies a junior lifeguard's three Rs, which we, do you remember them? Represent, respect, and responsibility. And he's also a fierce competitor. So Peter, as an A, one of the older junior lifeguards in their group, led the junior guard program up into Carpinteria last, end of last summer for state regionals competition. And of course, in normal form, he signed up for as many events as he could. He did the, what I have here is the paddle relay, individual distance swim, the individual paddle, and he led the rescue relay team, and they got fourth in the state, which is a pretty good accomplishment, since we don't focus entirely on competition. We're, our base is education more and water orientation. So if that's not enough, Peter proved himself again a couple of weeks ago at our lifeguard tryouts, now that he's old enough to be a lifeguard, in the freezing cold waters, which I was glad I didn't have to do that day. And he scored high in the swim, the run-swim-run, and got through the interviews with flying colors, and so we're going to have him back in this spring in the Basic Lifeguard Academy.
All right.
So we'd like to present him with our Junior Lifeguard Award. And there it is. Peter, good job. Congratulations.
All right, so Peter, if you'd like to say anything, you're more than welcome to. I'm going to read a proclamation after you're done, and then we're going to take a picture over near the flags, but go right ahead. The mic is yours.
Thank you, Captain Ure, for those kind words. Also, thank you to all the city of Newport Beach, all the instructors, group leaders, and safety aides for just making the program the way it is. This program has been, just been so great and influential that, as he said, I am now on the path to becoming a Newport lifeguard. Lastly, thank you to my parents for just all they have done and getting me on the beach that year. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Mayor O'Neil, I'd also like to introduce Tim and Patty.
Must be so proud. Congratulations. So we have a proclamation for you. I'm just going to read it real quickly. Whereas Peter Clark was selected as the 2019 Junior Lifeguard of the Year for exemplifying the values of the Junior Lifeguard program, and whereas Peter embraced the three Rs, respectful, responsible, and representative. Always be respectful of yourself and others, and be responsible in all you do because as a junior lifeguard, you are representative of the city and the Newport Beach lifeguards. And whereas Peter's most prominent qualities are his dedication to the team, eagerness to learn, work ethic, and a never-quits attitude, he is enthusiastic to engage in any and all ocean and beach-related events. And whereas Peter has excelled in all academic aspects of the program, showed excellence in the rigorous physical events, and displayed outstanding sportsmanship by encouraging others to succeed. And whereas Peter has provided leadership and safety for younger junior lifeguards, developed into a mentor, and has been a consistent role model. He was most reliable and helpful, taking direction well, and assisting wherever possible. And whereas while representing Newport Beach at the California State Regionals competition, Peter emerged as the department leader by entering the maximum four events, leading the swim relay, placing in the individual distance swim and paddle relay, and leading the rescue relay to a fourth overall in the state. It was clear to staff, teammates, and bystanders, Peter stood out, leading by example and putting into action the core values representative of the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard program. Now therefore, I, Will O'Neil, mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby commend Peter Clark for being the 2019 Junior Lifeguard of the Year. Congratulations. One, two, three.
F1 for social media.
Oh, great that we have a PI, isn't it?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Poor Tara.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Item number three, continuing the Year of the Volunteer. Laird Hayes, come on up. Laird is going to be receiving a proclamation. I'm going to have Mayor Protam Avery go ahead and announce it.
Thank you, Mayor. It gives me great pleasure to read this proclamation from my good friend and close neighbor, Laird Hayes, who I've known since about 1973, when I was a student at Orange Coast, and he was assistant dean of students. And I think he was like four years older than me, and he was a Princeton graduate. And, you know, I was, that was okay, and he was a surfer, and, you know, it's just unbelievable. And then this, some of you may remember, there was a thing called a doer's profile. It would come out in magazines showing, and they would profile a really interesting person from the entire country who wasn't famous, but I don't know how they find these people. And it went on for many years, and Laird was a doer's profile man. Good Scotch drinker, I guess. I don't know, but it was fantastic. So that's the end of my, but I want to read this proclamation for sure. Here we go. Whereas Laird Hayes is currently a member and past chair of the Newport Beach Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, and has served on the city's Water Quality and Coastal Tidestones Committee, and has for the past five years served our community as a volunteer in policing for Newport Beach, and is also currently a member of the Newport Beach Fire Department's Community Emergency Response Team. That's CERT, for those of you that, probably no one doesn't know that here. Whereas Laird Hayes has given his time to the following programs and organizations in our community: Leadership Tomorrow, Share Ourselves Foundation Board, Newport Harbor High School Student Mentoring Program, and Newport Beach Lifeguard Program. And whereas Laird Hayes served more than 30 years at Orange Coast College in the following roles: Assistant Dean of Students, faculty member, coach, and mentor. In these roles, he helped hundreds of Newport Beach students navigate college life and become better citizens. And whereas Laird Hayes has shared his passion for surfing and the ocean by establishing and teaching surfing classes, and for decades coached students from ages 18 to 75 on how to surf, be water-safe, help keep beaches clean. And whereas Laird is often joined in his volunteering by his wife Maggie, who also volunteers for the Newport Beach Police Department, and whose son Andy is currently employed as a Newport Beach lifeguard officer. And whereas Laird Hayes has demonstrated a lifelong devotion to Newport Beach, its residents, giving his time, energy, and knowledge to support, protect, teach, and guide others, thereby making our community stronger, safer, and a happier place to live. Therefore, Will O'Neil, mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire city council, does hereby recognize Laird Hayes for his longstanding and continued commitment to the betterment of Newport Beach.
All right, Laird. You have the mic, and we won't put a timer on, but...
This will not take very long. First and foremost, I want to thank my wife Maggie, who's sitting in the back with our grandson Jack, and my daughter Katie with granddaughter Lily, and Andy for always supporting everything that I've done. When I retired as a full-time faculty member from Orange Coast College, I met with Nancy Gardner, who used to come down and give little talks to the surfing class about Surf Rider Foundation and protecting the ocean and waves and the beach. And I said, Nancy, I want to get involved in the city. Do you have any suggestions? Because I had no idea how any of this stuff worked. And she said, yes, I think the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission would be a perfect place to start, but there wasn't an opening, so I was on the Water Quality and Coastal Tidestones Commission, and then an opening opened on Parks, Beaches, and Recreation, and filled out the applications, and fortunately, I was appointed by the city council, so I appreciate that opportunity, and appreciate all seven of you for reappointing me on the most recent term. This is an easy city to volunteer for. Got a great police department. John Lewis and I have been friends for years. Gary Clemente is just an amazing individual, school resource officer, as most of you know, at Corona Del Mar High School, and just an outstanding representative of law enforcement in our community. Just so lucky to have him. Sean Bolton, the principal of Newport Harbor High School, is standing in the back, and Sean and I have been dear friends for many, many years, since he was a student at Orange Coast College. It's amazing how the tentacles of Orange Coast just reach out everywhere in this community. And Sean has been incredibly supportive of me and the community, and being part of the mentor, junior mentor program at Newport's, just a real honor. And Tom Fishbacher, another friend from the police department, whose son Adam was in my surfing class, an amazing young man, a police explorer, and now he's volunteering and helping me teach the class. So the friends that I've made. Jeff Boils, whose son, as you know, Braden had a tremendous year at Edison High School this year. Jeff sent Braden to our quarterback camp years ago, so I got to know Jeff through that. But the real story about Jeff was years ago, when Andy was a youth water polo player, there was an end-of-the-year party at A Street, and the surf was, you know, pretty big, but it wasn't that huge. And Katie and Maggie decided to go out on the boogie boards and just paddle around, and finally it was time to come in. Well, they didn't pick the most opportune time to come in, and just a big, huge wave, you know, four or five feet, just slammed Maggie into the, she got pile-driven, into the sand, and she broke her elbow badly. It was shape, misshapen, and lifeguards are right on scene there, and then the paramedics came. Well, the paramedic in charge of the, one or two paramedics was Jeff, Boils. And so I got to know Jeff through that, and Jeff became Maggie's very best friend of all time, because Maggie was in serious pain, and out came the morphine, and Maggie felt way much, much better. The lifeguard department, I teach the surfing class at Orange Coast College, and they have been so supportive. Rob Williams years ago said, Laird, can we put on a safety orientation for your class? And I sometimes have as many as 75 students in the class, and that's just been absolutely invaluable. Now, Mike Halfide, Mike here, Brian O'Rourke, Andy, and that whole crowd down there, just roll out the red carpet for our surf class and make us feel at home down there. The Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission is an absolute blast. It's just such an honor to work with Laura, and through Laura, I've just met so many people. And again, this is an easy gig to work in Newport Beach. I just love the city. I love the people in it. I love coming over to the civic center and just kind of, you know, hanging out. And so, again, Will, I appreciate this so, so much. That's so kind of you, and Brad, those nice words, and Kevin, and Diane, and Jeff, and Duffy, and Joy. I appreciate your friendship, appreciate the support. Leilani, Grace, you've been wonderful to me. Everybody, and I, it means a whole lot. And again, I love the city, and just keep doing the great work that all of you are doing, and thank you again.
Thank you, Laird. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Almost forgot the picture, but Councilmember Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. You can't get away with a comment from me. But our wise and sage mayor came up with this Year of the Volunteer, and I cannot think of anyone who is a better candidate for this award. You are the perfect example of what you are saying all about the great people in our city who do so much like you do. So thanks, man. Great job. Keep it up.
Thanks, Doug.
All right.
Should we do that one first?
You want to do this one first?
Yeah, do that one first.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. You like that one? Awesome. Hi, good one.
You guys are here too.
Yeah, that's all, everybody.
You can always cross us out.
Okay, look this way and smile. Lily, one, two, three. One, two, three, cheese.
All right, one more for social media. One, two, three, there. Oh, perfect. There we go. See, the fun part of our view is when she said cheese, you all smiled. All right, we're going to move to item number four. So item number four is a presentation from the Banning Ranch Conservancy. So, after you.
All right. Hi, my name is Terry Welsh, and I'm president of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. You're also going to hear tonight from our vice president Suzanne Forster and our executive director Steve Ray, but personally for me, it is always an honor to speak before this council. And you may know me as the guy who has chaired a monthly Banning Ranch meeting since 1999. And allow me just to relate a sentiment that has been growing in my heart through the years. You know, the United States Constitution, First Amendment guarantees five basic freedoms to all Americans, and, you know, we all know about the freedom of the press and freedom of speech and freedom of religion, but the fourth freedom is the freedom to peacefully assemble. And I can tell you, after something like 250 Banning Ranch meetings over 21 years, how important that has meant to me. It just keeps getting more and more important all the time, and may we never lose that freedom. I want to share a couple dirty little secrets about environmental activists that I've learned the hard way through the years. First of all, environmental activists are not active people. We're very sedentary people. We sit all day in front of a computer screen, usually answering environmental emails. And the other one is environmental activists seldom actually experience the environment. It's because we're so busy trying to save it, and that's true. Anyway, enough of that. Exhibit A tonight is Banning Ranch, and for an environmental activist like myself, it is the real deal. It is one of only two federally recognized...
You want to do this one first?
Yeah, do that one first.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
I want to stop you.
You like that one? Awesome. Hi, three. Good one.
You guys are here too.
Yeah, that's all, everybody.
Okay, look this way and smile. Lily.
Cheese, Lily.
One, two, three. One, two, three, cheese.
All right, one more for Sophia.
Cheese, more cheese.
One, two, three, there. Oh, perfect. There we go.
See, the fun part of our view is when she said cheese, you all smiled. All right, we're going to move to item number four. So item number four is a presentation from the Banning Ranch Conservancy. So after you.
All right. Hi, my name is Terry Welsh, and I'm president of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. You're also going to hear tonight from our vice president Suzanne Forster and our executive director Steve Ray. But personally, for me, it is always an honor to speak before this council. And you may know me as the guy who has chaired a monthly Banning Ranch meeting since 1999. And allow me just to relate a sentiment that has been growing in my heart through the years. You know, the United States Constitution, First Amendment, guarantees five basic freedoms to all Americans. And, you know, we all know about the freedom of the press and freedom of speech and freedom of religion. But the fourth freedom is the freedom to peacefully assemble. And I can tell you, after something like 250 Banning Ranch meetings over 21 years, how important that is meant to me. It just keeps getting more and more important all the time, and may we never lose that freedom. I want to share a couple dirty little secrets about environmental activists that I've learned the hard way through the years. First of all, environmental activists are not active people. We're very sedentary people. We sit all day in front of a computer screen, usually answering environmental emails. And the other one is environmental activists seldom actually experience the environment. It's because we're so busy trying to save it. And that's true. Anyway, enough of that. Exhibit A tonight is Banning Ranch. And for an environmental activist like myself, it is the real deal. It is one of only two federally recognized verteal pool complexes in coastal Orange County, and the only one that has critical habitat for the San Diego fairy shrimp. And the entire Banning Ranch is critical habitat for the threatened California gnat catcher. You know, there used to be a population of cactus runs on Banning Ranch. There were as many as 14 pairs during the 90s, but they're gone. But I'll tell you something, they are going to come back. And you probably have heard of burrowing owls. You know, they used to be all over Orange County year-round. Now, there's just a handful of places where they'll come in for the winter. Banning Ranch is one of those. There's going to be a day when there's going to be a year-round population of burrowing owls on Banning Ranch once again. For Native American people, Banning Ranch is special, because think about it. For thousands of years, this is where the San Anna River entered into the Pacific Ocean, the site of historic marine estuary, a site of year-round abundant food. And here you have a mesa right next to it. I mean, where else would you want to be? And in fact, the evidence shows that people have been living on Banning Ranch for 3,000 years or more. For people that currently live near Banning Ranch, they want to save it as open space just because they don't want the traffic and the congestion, and the light, and the noise. And there's people that don't even live near Banning Ranch, and they still want to save it as open space. And for all of those reasons and many more, in 2006, the City of Newport Beach amended its general plan to prioritize the acquisition of Banning Ranch as an open space amenity. A few short years later, the Banning Ranch Conservancy was formed. We're a nonprofit with the goal of working with city officials, the landowners, towards our mission, which is the preservation, acquisition, conservation, and management of the entire Banning Ranch as a permanent public open space park and coastal nature preserve. Well, let's leap ahead 12 years. Here we are in 2020, and thanks to an incredibly generous donation of $50 million from the Randalls and the amazing professional work of the Trust for Public Land and the landowners themselves, who have seriously opened their mind to alternative future uses of Banning Ranch, we are closer than ever to realizing Newport Beach's Banning Ranch dream. Steve's going to fill you in on some of the details, but I do have an ask tonight. Now, as crazy as it may sound, $50 million is not enough to buy Banning Ranch. We need more money. And I'm not expecting Newport Beach to write a check for the difference, although that would be nice. But what I'd love to see is to see the City of Newport Beach marshal its resources, not just its financial resources, but its human resources, its staff, and its network of political connections and political capital, and use these resources to support the effort to find the remainder of the money, wherever it may be, private or public sources. Now, there is not a person in the Banning Ranch community that would not say that with the City of Newport Beach solidly behind us, we can go even further. And lastly, I would like to share the Banning Ranch Conservancy knows how to leverage resources. And let me give you an example of that. Now, when the Randalls... Before the Randalls donated $50 million, they gave us $5 million. This was back in 2012, with the understanding that that $5 million would be sitting there and used only for the purchase of Banning Ranch. Well, after some conversations with the Randalls, it was agreed that we could take some of that $5 million and give it to Trust for Public Land. And then the Trust for Public Land would put two full-time staff people focused solely on Banning Ranch, and that would be Paolo Peroni and Dave Sutton. And let me tell you, that has made all the difference in the world. So before I leave, again, I want to ask, please support the process. Let's see us cross the finish line in 2020. Ladies and gentlemen, Suzanne Forster, our vice president.
So as Terry said, I'm Suzanne Forster. I'm a 47-year resident of Newport Beach. And yeah, there's a picture of it. And that's a shot of Banning Ranch, from my place, actually, from where I live up in the bluffs across from Hope Hospital. I'm also the vice president of the Banning Ranch Conservancy, and I have some happy statistics to share this evening. These are from a flyer released just last month by the current landowner, Newport Banning Ranch. And the flyer says that 15 million Californians live within an hour's drive of Banning Ranch. I thought I knew most of the stats on Banning Ranch, but that one shocked me, in a good way. In my opinion, it can only mean that a coastal park and nature preserve on Banning Ranch is going to bring lots of joy to lots of people, 15 million if they all make it down here. So I think that... I would like to think that's something that we can all celebrate, and hopefully more than celebrate. I've had some impossible dreams realized in the last couple of years, and I don't want to push my luck now. But my new one is to live to see us, the Banning Ranch Conservancy and the CNB, work together, as Terry mentioned, to bring joy to lots of people. I think that would be very cool, but we need to hurry because I'm not getting any younger. A couple more happy statistics, and then I'll wrap this up. In addition to all the visitors, the park will offer a mountains-to-the-sea hiking and biking path connecting new routes to the San Anna River Trail. It will also offer Native American cultural program and amenities. It will have park access for disadvantaged communities and the potential for campsites, education, research, and much, much more. It's a long list. Being up here tonight brings back memories, including one of my very first presentations to the council. It was, I believe it was 2012, Nancy Gardner was mayor. I can't remember the exact date, because there were many presentations, and they've all blurred together for me now. But it was the better part of a decade ago. And believe me, it wasn't under nearly such pleasant circumstances as these. I was making what I hoped was a solid case against residential and commercial development of an operational oil field, Banning Ranch, of course. It was a different council at that time, and from where I stood on the... You know, at the microphone here, everybody seemed very stony-faced and kind of silent. And my expectations of winning any one over, even including the security guard who was there that night, were very low. I really appreciated it when Nancy Gardner spoke up and asked me some very pertinent questions about oil field hazards. It was probably, as I think about it now, it was almost worth the loss of sleep, the rattled nerves, and the weeks of research. But it's much better to be here tonight, hands down. That doesn't mean the council back then were not all good people. They were. We were just on different sides. The Conservancy is one of many entities now involved in the effort to preserve Banning Ranch. Terry mentioned a couple of them. And I believe, if all goes well, that we're about to take a big step into the future. Words can't express what a thrilling prospect that is for us. I just hope the stars align, that we can all take that step together. It's an honor and a privilege to be here tonight. I thank you all for listening, and I thank Joy and Grace for inviting us. Thanks. Okay, Debra.
Well, good evening, honorable mayor and council. I'm Steve Ray. I'd also like to thank the city manager and the entire staff for assisting us with this, and also like to welcome Mr. Mulder from the Newport Banning Ranch Owners to tonight's discussion also. First of all, you heard from our very exciting president, Dr. Welsh, who is a doctor, a medical doctor. He saves lives. Suzanne Forster, our vice president, is a bestselling author, many times over 40-something novels. I don't have anything exciting like that that I can promote about myself, except that I maybe have... Do three impossible things every morning before breakfast. One is I wake up alive, which, considering some of the things I've done in my life, is a remarkable thing. Second, I walk, which, again, is a remarkable thing. And the third thing is that I get to work on Banning Ranch. And you talk about impossible things. Many things that we've done over the years have been considered impossible, and we have succeeded fairly well at them. So we are here... I'm here to do the boring part of this presentation to you, to give you some more facts and figures about what we're doing. Now, Terry had showed you our mission statement. I'm going to break it down in a little more detail. Again, our mission is to preserve, acquire, conserve, and manage those four things, the entire Banning Ranch as permanent public open space, park, and coastal nature preserve. So we're going to concentrate on those. First item is to preserve. Well, preserving, in our definition, actually means preserving it from massive development, from any development, and saving it for the resources that are dependent on it, the plant life and the wildlife. And by preserving it, we were able to show that the Banning Ranch is full of what's called ESHA, environmentally sensitive habitat areas. And that was concluded by the Coastal Commission and their findings and their decision. It was also supported by the decision of the California Supreme Court in finding for us in that action. So Banning Ranch is a very rich and very wealthy place. Terry Welsh showed you a lot of pictures of the creatures that are there, and there are a lot of endangered and threatened species, and what are other species that are called Species of Special Concern on-site. So they deserve to have a home just as much as we do ourselves. Second thing is to acquire the property. Now, this is a very difficult process. It involves negotiations, and negotiations are going on. As you've probably heard, it's been announced publicly. The Trust for Public Land has partnered with us to conduct the negotiations with Mr. Mulder and his partners and the owners to try to find a way to make this acquisition possible. It requires funding, of course. And this here, the picture that you see in front of you, this is Frank and Joanne Randall. This is the Newport Beach couple who have donated $50 million for the effort to acquire Banning Ranch. It's a tremendous contribution on their part, and it certainly has excited a lot of people around the state who are working very hard to find the rest of the funding along with us to make this happen. Yeah, as Terry said, $50 million isn't enough to buy a Banning Ranch. It's 401 acres on the coast in Newport Beach. What do you expect? But we're committed to finding that funding and to make this acquisition possible. The issues regarding the ownership of the property, there are different interests on the property, the oil interests, the conservation interests, legal issues to be concerned about that all affect the ownership. Those items will... Are being negotiated and will be resolved as well. And then, of course, there's remediation. It is an operating oil field. And our vision of a park and coastal nature preserve requires that the oil site be cleaned up. The plan for the developers is... Or for the oil companies is to consolidate all oil operations on about a 13-and-a-half-acre piece of Banning Ranch. And that will continue... That's where the... All the oil operations will continue. Operations on the entire rest of the property, and there were at one time 521 wells on this property. All of those wells and operations and their supporting apparatuses and structures will be removed, the land will be cleaned up, and that would be part of the negotiated settlement. And that remediation would occur and be signed off by the appropriate legal authorities prior to the close of any sale of the property. And then we want to conserve it. Well, first of all, is open space. It is currently open space, except for the oil operations that are concentrated there. The rest of it is open space. You can see in the picture, it's beautiful out there, especially after we get rains in the winter and early spring. We want to turn it into a park, a park for all people to enjoy and a nature preserve, because, you know, we look at this as... We want to save this for the animals and the plants and everything, but we more than that, we wanted to save it for us, because we need it as much, if not more, than the creatures who live on that spot. Because we need a place to go to clear our minds, to enjoy ourselves, to take our kids, to acquaint everybody with nature, to educate our population. So it will be a nature preserve for the creatures, the wildlife and the plants who live there, but it will be a park for the rest of us to enjoy. And that will require a lot of restoration. The place has a lot of healthy plant life, like you see right here in the picture. That's called Encelia Californica, also California sunflower. And that is the basic building block of coastal state scrub habitat, which is one of the 10 most biodiverse habitats on Earth, according to the United Nations. And that's right here in Banning Ranch. So we want to restore all of it to native plant health like this. There are a lot of non-native invasive species there that have grown over the years. Our plan is to remove all of those and to replant with all natives and have a very, very healthy environment that all of the wildlife who are dependent on it will have. And then we want to manage it. And by managing, and I mean, first of all, we're going to have a team of people and an organization that will manage the property, and it will provide public access. That is certainly one of the requirements that all of us, both the owners, us, Trust for Public Land, and state agencies that we're talking to, and other local public agencies. Everybody wants to see public access on Banning Ranch, to open it up to the public. And there will be trails, allowing people to go around through the property. There will be preserved areas for the animals and plants, but there will be areas where the public can go through as well and enjoy it. Recreational opportunities, you know, need to have some park facilities for the kids to enjoy, other things to... For people to go out there and be able to enjoy the property itself. We intend to do a lot of education programming on-site. This is an excellent site. I've done education programs at other places, Catalina Island, Shipley Nature Center, Bolsochika, all projects that I've been involved in in the past. And education will be a great incentive for people to come and visit the site and provides a great opportunity to train the stewards, the environmental stewards of the future. It's a... Site has a tremendous culture, Native American history out there. And so we want to preserve that and enhance that, and we want to tell that story as well. And we are partnering with the Native American communities, the Hakshiman and Tongva nations, the Native nations in this area, as to what the future of the site can hold in terms of providing opportunities for the Native Americans to enjoy their heritage and to celebrate their heritage. And then we're going to have a lot of other partnerships, not just with the Native Americans, but with public agencies, with other environmental groups, with community groups, hopefully the City Council of Newport Beach, that will enable us to have a tremendous asset here. And as Suzanne mentioned, there are 15 million people that live within an hour's drive of this site. So there's a great opportunity for tourism here. I don't know if you're aware, but birding, you know, people that like to go out and watch birds is a $40 billion a year business in the United States. When I restored the Shipley Nature Center, I walked up to the gate one day, and we found a... Discovered a bird on site called a Philadelphia vireo, kind of a rare bird. And I walked up to the gate one morning, Monday morning, and there was a line going way out of sight, down to the corner, around the corner. And I was walking along, asking everybody, "What are you here for?" And they said, "Well, we came to see the Philadelphia vireo." And I said, "All of these people?" And I started asking them, "Where are you from?" Or they were from Rancho Cucamonga, they were from Fontana, they were from Santa Barbara. And then there were these two ladies, and I said, "Where are you from?" And they said, "We are from Belgium." And I said, "Like, the country in Europe?" And they said, "Yes." And I said, "You were here visiting or something?" And they said, "No, we came over to see the bird." And I said, "You flew over here to see this bird?" And they said, "Yeah, it's on our list. We want to see it." Birders are very connected to their list. They want to complete their list. So these ladies came all the way from Belgium to see this bird. They stayed in the hotels, they ate at the local restaurants, they bought a lot of gifts and shopped in all the retail stores in downtown Huntington Beach. We can have that same thing here in Newport Beach. People will come. You know that famous baseball movie where they said, "Build it," and they will come? Well, opening Banning Ranch, people will come to see it because it is a tremendous asset and offers a lot of opportunities for people. And the other thing, too, is we have a plan called the Orange Coast River Park that I've been involved with for over 20 years on this plan. And the idea is to connect all of the open spaces in the... At the mouth of the San Anna River into one large open space with common trails, common interpretive signage, common opportunities for visiting. And this will open it up tremendously to... As an economic engine for this city and, in fact, surrounding, the entire surrounding area. And it connects directly with the San Anna River Trail there that goes 110 miles from the ocean entrance right there, all the way up to the top of Mount Sangor Gonio. I was the head of a group called the San Anna River Watershed Alliance, and that was our project to make that happen. People come from all... Through the watershed to hike that trail. And there's even a book written about that trail guide. So... And then we can connect from there out to other places, like Newport Back Bay and Bolsochika, and bring all these together into one large connected area where people can hike and bike and stroll and enjoy themselves and learn about nature. And we've been working on a concept, our conception... And we've been working on a concept, our conceptual vision for what Banning Ranch could have. This is an example of what it could look like with all of the various habitats. You see from up in the north there where you have the wetlands, and our plan would be to reconnect that wetlands to the tidal flow and have a full, healthy wetlands on site. There are willow wetlands, which are freshwater wetlands up there that house the endangered species, Lee Spills Vireo. There's coastal sage scrub all over the area. There are grasslands there in the yellow where the burrowing owls burrow, and you'll see kind of a, looks like a purplish there. That's the California purple needle grass. That is a state plant of the state of California, and it is on Banning Ranch, and that habitat would be protected. And there will be hiking trails, a little harder to see on the big screen up there, but you can see there are hiking trails around. There are these red dots where you could put overlooks and interpretive opportunities. We are looking at boardwalks going across the wetlands there, out to other additional outlooks. Could have a hiking and biking trail combined, coming onto the property and going out into the other areas of the Orange Coast River Park. Could have an area where the recreational facilities are put in there. This is, you know, we're working on a vision. We have a lot of people that are interested in coming down here and working with us on this, and I'm talking world-class people, people who have designed some of the most iconic structures on Earth, people who currently are, at this point, building the new NFL Stadium in LA and the George Lucas Museum in LA and the new soccer stadium in LA and her doing the Los Angeles River Revitalization Program. All of these people want to come down here and work on Banning Ranch because their intent, our intent, is that this will be the standard for all future open space properties in the world to aspire to. Sustainability will be a key to the way this is going to be designed, the way it's going to be exercised. And we have people from the Green Building Council, people from the Living Building Challenge, which is like leads on speed, to make all of this happen, and we're looking forward to working with all of them. And then, this is a little picture that we came up with, show what the entrance might look like with Native American keeches to represent the heritage there with oil wells to show that the oil heritage of the site. Places where school buses will come in and bring in the kids for all the educational opportunities. And the ranch-type setting that you come through with native plant nursery over here to grow things and other buildings, visitor center, things like that. People can hike and bike and drive in. We see a great, great future for Banning Ranch as the Banning Ranch Park and Preserve. And we are available for any questions. We have our contact information there. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Actually, I do have a question, Steve.
Yes.
So you know that the state of California, I mean, so I'm guessing what you're looking for is us to help support, trying to find money because there's proposition money and whatnot at the state of California. And the state of California, right now, our governor has said his number-one mission is housing, and I didn't see any housing described on Banning Ranch. So I'm assuming your plan for this is to try to find additional money so that there will be no housing on Banning Ranch. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, first of all, there's two problems. One is that almost the entire site has been declared ESHA legally by the Coastal Commission and as confirmed by the court. So it doesn't leave a lot of room for any development on the site. And certainly accessible development, that's another thing. You can't, you can't take out ESHA to put in roads to get to an area where there might be some, you know, a bare spot of dirt where you could build a few things, unless you want to put a zip line in or helicopter service to bring people into their homes. Access is difficult to get to some of the, what might be some buildable spots on the site. So that is a problem.
Well, Steve, hang on, Steve. I'm asking a pretty specific question right now. Assume for a moment that there's a Coastal Commission turnover where people have a different interpretation of what you've just described. I'm asking, if you're going to the state of California and would like our support for it, to go get money, substantial amount of money, it sounds like, is the goal to have no housing at all on Banning Ranch?
Well, the goal is to preserve it as open space.
But the answer is no housing.
Well, that's not in our plan. The state agencies who, you know, may contribute to the purchase of Banning Ranch may have some other ideas, and that's for, you know, that's conversation to be had at that appropriate time when we're talking to those agencies. And I know it's certainly a priority for the governor. And yes, we would be looking for support to acquire the property. I don't know if you're aware, but the city council, a couple of city councils back, when we were going through the difficult times of saving the property, we had an opportunity to get some money from the Orange County Measure M Fund. And the city council at that time were very kind and generous and wrote a letter of support in our efforts to secure funding from Measure M at that time. And we would certainly like for this city council to provide that same kind of support. This site can be a tremendous resource for the city of Newport Beach to be associated with.
Yeah. I understand that. I think what I'm trying to explain, I'm trying to say is, the state has put us in a pretty tough position right now, and we've been very clear about that when we've been sending letters to HCD and whatnot, that we've been told, on the one hand, build 4,832 units with 1,450 of them being very low income, and on the other hand, don't build anything, right? And the different government agencies telling us different things. And so, I would just say, the challenge for us, the challenge for us is that we've got the dictate of 4,832. We've got an area right now that's still in our housing element that shows 1,375 units, I think, on Banning Ranch. And taking away an entire area while we're trying to figure out where to even put housing to, or trying to place things into a housing element is a really difficult proposition for us. And so, in the discussions with the state that you're having, if there's an opportunity for this to turn into open space, it'd be fantastic if we could get a substantial reduction in the, you know, in the amount of housing dictate that we've received from the state of California. That's the place the state has put us in a really tough, you know, rock and hard place on this. And that's, I just want to make sure I'm explaining this correctly because I don't think anyone dislikes the Banning Ranch Conservancy by any stretch. I think that you're going to want help from the state, and I understand that, and we want help from the state, too. And that's, that's pretty difficult. So anyway, I'll kick this over to Ms. Brenner.
Okay.
Well, certainly, if there's any opportunities for collaboration and compromise, that would be helpful, but I wanted to say congratulations because of the work that you've done has just been amazing. And recognizing that this is the year of the volunteer, I think that we do need to recognize all the hundreds of volunteers who have helped with the Banning Ranch Conservancy and all the work that you've done. And we certainly appreciate that, and we congratulate you on what you've done so far, and we'd love the opportunity to work with you.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I would like to say it's actually more than hundreds. I stopped counting at 4,077 of people who had been involved in helping to save Banning Ranch. It's gone up quite a bit since then, but I got tired of counting at that time.
That's amazing.
And we would, you know, seriously, I had addressed this to the council once before, that we certainly understand the difficulty that the city has with these new requirements, the Reiner requirements that are out. And we would, you know, we would be happy to work with the city to try to identify other options. We certainly, I know that the 1,375, that is zoned in the code, that is zoning, that's allowed if there is no opportunity to acquire and conserve Banning Ranch as open space. There is a condition for that, 1,375, in the general plan. And in terms of whether that's achievable at all, probably not, especially given that the plan that was rejected by the Coastal Commission included only 895 housing units at that time. And that was not acceptable either, given the constraints, the environmental constraints on the property. I would not like to be sitting in your shoes right now, dealing with this problem. And if there's any way that we can meet with you to try to work out something, and as we talk to people at the state, and we're going to be having a lot of conversations, I think, with people in the state, you know, we would be happy to try to provide a perspective that the city has on this issue as well and make sure that we fairly represent that.
Appreciate that. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. And this does not require response. You can sit down if you would like.
Oh, okay. Thank you. My, all four legs are getting tired.
Thank you. Nice presentation. I hope you're successful in raising the funds. I'm sorry, I'm speaking right now. We'll tell, why don't you go first and then I'll go?
Mr. Beek, sorry, we haven't opened public comment yet. If you wouldn't mind taking a seat for just a moment, Mr. Muldoon is speaking. Thank you.
Yeah, we always let him go first. That's fine. I've lost my train of thought.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, Mr. Beek, I apologize. We're gonna, we'll open, Alan? I'm sorry, we're gonna, we'll open public comment now if you'd like to speak.
Thank you. My name is Alan Beek. I'm Secretary of the SPON Organization. We are now rewriting the general plan. Fifteen years ago, we rewrote the general plan, and some of us tried pretty hard then, but we failed. This time, I am optimistic that we will succeed in having the Banning Ranch shown in the land use element area as open space.
Thank you, Mr. Beek. Thank you. Any other speakers?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding the housing question, we've been speaking tonight like Banning Ranch is in Newport Beach. My understanding is Banning Ranch is surrounded by Newport Beach, but it actually currently is unincorporated county land. Newport Beach has never formally annexed it. It's within what's called our sphere of influence. So I wanted to emphasize the comment that you may not have seen that I submitted in writing regarding our housing element update committee that we expect to be appointed this evening, which is the Southern California Association of Governments in explaining their method of allotting the 1,000, 1.34 million units to the various jurisdictions. Unincorporated land that's merely within a city's sphere of influence was not counted as part of the city's responsibilities. So our 4,832 units are not based on Banning Ranch. It was not taken in consideration in assigning those to us. And I would flip that around and say that we cannot probably take credit for it. It's in our housing element now, but it was not the basis of the assignment to us, and I don't think anything we planned for it could be taken as credit towards that, since it was not the basis of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. Terry Kokan, Costa Mesa resident and a member of the Orange County Model Engineers. We run trains in Fairview Park where it's more fun than Disneyland. The lines aren't as long and it's a whole lot cheaper. I'm also a supporter, as you can probably tell from the hat, I think, of Banning Ranch. And I would like to say, there's been kind of a semantic disconnect in the housing element that's going on. I keep hearing the words affordable housing. We don't need affordable housing. We need cheap places for the homeless to live. And I hope that we can reach a compromise on all this. That's really all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker, please. So we're gonna, all right, no clapping. Come on up. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Patricia Martz, Professor Emerita Archaeology and Anthropology at Cal State LA and Orange County resident since 1976. And I'm the president of the California Cultural Resources Preservation Alliance. And our alliance is against any development within Banning Ranch, and we support the Banning Ranch Conservancy's plan to purchase and preserve Banning Ranch, the cultural and natural resources that are there. Banning Ranch is the last remaining unprotected open space within Orange County coast, and despite oil well development, it supports a very valuable ecosystem. And it is this ecosystem that led the Gaberlino Tongva and the Waneño Hachaman ancestors to settle there, collect plants and animals, hold ceremonies, and bury their dead. It is this ecosystem that, together with the archaeological sites, that formed Banning Ranch traditional cultural properties and traditional cultural landscape, and these are listed with the Native American Heritage Commission. Originally, there were eight recorded archaeological sites in Banning Ranch, and due to the impacts of the oil well development, there are only three that qualify for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. They are listed on the Native American Heritage Commission's sacred lands inventory. And this is because they are part of the pre-contact historic village complex of Jenga. In addition, the entire Banning Ranch property is listed as a traditional cultural landscape. Over 90% of coastal archaeological sites in Orange County have been destroyed to make way for development. This site, this area represents significant spiritual and cultural losses for the Native American culture and ancestors and the descendants today. And it's time that Native American spiritual and cultural values are given the consideration and respect that they deserve. So we urge you to deny development of Banning Ranch and to support preservation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please. Sorry, if you're planning on speaking, come on, come on up. Okay.
My name is Kathleen Andrews, a 31-year resident of Newport Beach. I had a plan thing and I scribbled all over it, all this wonderful stuff about, that we've been talking about, about thanking you for taking the steps you've taken so far to preserve Newport Banning Ranch and how we really can't underestimate the expertise and dedication of the people that have been working for Newport Banning Ranch Conservancy, and just how beautiful Bolsa Chica is. It's even reflected in the name. And it's how essential it is for the migrating birds, those incredibly cute burrowing owl and the archaeological treasures. And as I was thinking that we've got this housing pressures, and it suddenly became, I got this vision of Central Park. We've got Manhattan, and then there was the open space. You know, it's because we're thinking about how many people want to live in New York, and they put up this sentence, "We aren't going to go past this one line." And they said, you know, "I think Bolsa Chica is that to us. I think we can have this vision. We can make this river park happen. We can keep that in our minds and say, you know, imagine this open space with those incredibly cute burrowing owls and people jogging through that and the kids learning, and we can do this. And I'm really confident that we're wonderful problem solvers and we'll get the housing that we need." We can, I think we can find both, and I just want to say, just given how, you know, in 1989, when I moved to this area, it's because it had that open space, and it's really adding to the quality of our lives, whether or not we see it every day, just having that breathing space. And it's something we really don't want to lose. So I just say, let's leverage that $50 million and all our negotiation skills and our savvy, and I think we can accomplish keeping that open space, maintaining it and preserving it. And it's just too valuable of a mistake to do anything else.
Thank you. All right. Any other speakers? All right, well, thank you all very much for being here, and thank you for the presentation. Very informative. So with that, Madam Clerk, are we moving to public comments? Okay. So we have public comments on agenda or non-agenda items. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Muldoon. I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Muldoon.
No, thank you. I wanted to give a little civics discussion. I appreciate your efforts, and you're doing the right thing by raising money. What I think was not right, and there's this notion that you're going to take this land from someone else using regulation. And you cited the Constitution of the United States, and fundamental principle of the Constitution is enshrined in the Fifth Amendment, says you will not take land for public use without compensating. says you will not take land for public use without compensating the person, the private owner. And that's not some arbitrary provision. That's, that's actually the heart of the Constitution. As a matter of fact, the founding fathers almost awarded it that we're here for the pursuit of life, liberty, and the pursuit of property. They viewed property as a fundamental right that ensured you had protections and other avenues. And Milton Friedman would say economic rights are the foundations for all freedoms we have, like freedom of religion and freedom of speech. If we don't have those rights, essentially a king or a tyrannical government could push us around because we have no resources. Well, the point I'm trying to get at is for those who are at home or for those of you who are even in the audience, it's not your land and it's owned by a private entity. And I think you're doing the right thing with this approach. But at the end of the day, what, what has gone, what has gone is here is, in my opinion, has not always been the right thing. And we have a severe housing crisis, but even as a governor wants to try to fix those housing issues, he's taken away property rights at the same time. And I think that we need to find a balance. I actually think that this approach is a balance because you're gonna raise the funds. But along the way, I just think it's important that we can't lose our eye on the bigger picture, which is that these property rights of private individuals, whether they're enshrined, incorporated or not, are, are very important for our society and for our children. And they've done a great service to us in a Western democracy thus far. So as a, as a history and constitutional buff, I just, I had to say that. Thanks so much.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to public comments. Do we have public comments on, on agenda items? All right, seen none. Mr. Harp.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. The City Council will adjourn to closed session to meet with legal counsel regarding item number 4A, discuss the notice of intent to commence cease and desist orders dated January 28th and January 30th, 2020, from John Ainsworth, Executive Director of the California Coast Commission, related to alleged prohibited encroachments on Peninsula Point in the city of Newport Beach. Both of those notices are on file to City Clerk here at City Hall at 170 Center Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. We stand in recess until 7:00 o'clock meeting. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to Newport Beach. Tonight is the regular meeting of the February 25th, 2020 council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
There's no closed session report this evening.
All right, fantastic. Our invicator found himself a little bit sick, so I will be leading the invocation tonight, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Duffield, if you wouldn't mind standing with us, please.
Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the freedom to gather in this place and exchange thoughts and words and to walk from here in safety. We pray for those who provide that safety here and abroad. We pray for those afflicted with illness that they may be better. And we pray that you give us wisdom tonight and the days going forward. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight, we're going to be celebrating Corona Del Mar Residents Association. Karen Tringali, if you wouldn't mind coming up. I'll kick the presentation over to Councilmember Brenner.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. Whereas the Corona Del Mar Residents Association was formed in 1987 as a volunteer resident advocacy association, working diligently to protect, preserve, and improve the quality of life in Corona Del Mar and provide a voice to residents. And whereas Karen Tringali has served this organization for more than 20 years in every volunteer role, including board member, chair of the annual meeting, chair of the election committee, technical information officer, secretary, vice president, and six years as president. And whereas Karen has led countless board meetings, dozens of annual meetings, published countless newsletters and email blasts, organized and maintained association archives and membership records, and has been the foundation and backbone of the organization, thereby inspiring the rest of the association to do more. And whereas in addition to her work with CDMRA, Karen has been involved with the Newport Beach Fire Department's Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, program since 2006. Over the past 14 years, she has volunteered hundreds, if not thousands, of hours to better prepare the Newport Beach community for any unexpected emergency. And whereas Karen is one of the reasons the Newport Beach CERT program was awarded the 2012 FEMA Award for Outstanding CERT Program Initiatives and the 2013 White House Champions of Change Award. And whereas Karen's volunteerism goes far beyond those items mentioned here, including technical support and input for many other community organizations.
Now, therefore, I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Karen Tringali for her many years of service to the citizens and community of Newport Beach. Karen, you have the microphone.
Oh, dear. Well, you know, there was a lot of subterfuge in getting me up here to talk about the Residents Association this evening. So my notes are compiled with that in mind. But let me say, I'm pretty astounded by the recognition and the honor of receiving this recognition. And I really appreciate it. And if you'll give me just a moment, I would like to share a few thoughts about the Residents Association because truth be known, the Residents Association is really the springboard into my involvement in activity with other organizations. So, you know, I was, I was brought into that group and made a real active part of it. And it made, it really opened my eyes to what it means to be a community member and, and really work together collectively for the better of the community. And so from the Residents Association, things like CERT and other community organizations in the, in the broader Newport Beach were really attractive to me. And I, I just, I was just delighted that that was the springboard that allowed me to meet so many people and so many leaders, leaders in our community. And it's a really important thing, so. I don't know, maybe I should let Debbie talk about the Residents Association. So 1987, Phil Sanson was the council member for Corona Del Mar. And he knew that it was really important for council members to have the pulse of the community. And so he reached out to some members of the community and said, "Help me understand what my group, my Corona Del Mar constituents need and want from council and what, and what their issues are and challenges." So he reached out to a group of people, Deborah Allen, Joy Brenner, Nancy Gardner, Paul Bartlow, Marge Sawyer, Bruce Beardsley, Mariner Ireland, Donna Wall, Val Scorro, and Lee Spencer. And they answered that call and formed the Residents Association. It started out as a small group of volunteers, a small group of homeowner and resident members. You didn't need to own a home in Corona Del Mar. You just needed to call Corona Del Mar your home. And so our membership expanded and grew to include all the, the new, the new communities. The original community, the Village, it represents about half of our membership. And in addition to the Village, we have 27 HOAs and apartment communities, and we have memberships from all of those. So it's a really important, inclusive, and diverse organization. Each of those neighborhoods, just like Newport Beach, I mean, were not homogeneous. The Village has issues that are different than a planned community, than apartment dwellers. So, so, you know, we work together. We work with every council member. We work with every city staff member, with city managers. You know, we have just this really collective will to make things better and to help communicate that to council. So I have more to say, but I'm sure we're, you get the sense of why this organization is so important, not just to Corona Del Mar, but really to the community as a whole. So again, thank you very much for this privilege and honor.
Congratulations, Karen. Hang on, hang on. You get to take a picture, too. There you go.
One, two, three. One more.
And stay there. Okay, Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Okay. Now is the time for City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council on committee activities. Mr. Hurdman.
I tell you with each meeting that I sit on the Vector Control Board of Trustees here in Orange County. Every city is represented by, on the, on the Board of Trustees. So part of my responsibilities is to give you an update, warn you against things like the ankle biter mosquito that is actually known as the ADZ gipti. But it is growing in Orange County and I just want to bring that to your attention, but also tell you that Vector Control has a plan for the eradication of the growth of this particular ankle biter. Our April 20th starts Mosquito Awareness Month in the county of Orange. Excuse me. I've had a busy two weeks since our last council meeting. I want to start with a meeting that I attended yesterday that was organized by Representative Harley Ruda and his staff. And it has to do with, I think, I hope, most of you people know that for the three and a half years, almost four years now that I've been on council, a great deal of my time has been devoted to aviation issues and John Wayne Airport. We had a most productive meeting yesterday. Harley actually brought the FAA to Newport Beach, California. There were six representatives from DC that came and met with us and listened to us and talked to us about Next Gen, about the, about what it has done to a good third of our community in terms of quality of life issues as it relates to overflights over their homes. Diane has joined the Aviation Committee just recently as vice chair, and I'm really looking forward to working with her on, on these issues. She has a great deal of expertise in this area and Kevin does also. You know, I approached them three years ago, my first year on council, when a citizen group came to one of our meetings. And, well, not yet a citizen group, just a group of concerned citizens wanting to meet with the council. And I came up to Diane and Kevin after the meeting and I said, "Would you be willing to meet with these people with me?" And they did. And they've, they've been, they've been very committed to this effort for the last three and a half, almost four years as well. What did we talk about? We talked about forming a task force. The Aviation Committee last night approved some initiatives for the year that we're gonna go after. We're really gonna go after with the FAA, with the airport, with the airlines. Our whole, our, our goal is, is, is to bring about some relief for the city of Newport Beach when it comes to overflight noise and pollution. So I just want you to know, we're really, really working on it. And for the first time in four years, I am so optimistic about receiving cooperation from the FAA and about receiving cooperation from the airport and even though Orange County Board of Supervisors. So I'm optimistic about the time ahead. I attended a Rena Symposium Dinner with Diane and with Joy. It was a really good evening. I learned a great deal and was able to share some relevant information with our mayor following that. We also attended, Joy and I, the very next morning, an appropriations meeting on permanent and affordable housing, homeless shelter funding. Attended the Corona Del Mar Residents Association meeting, Chamber Government Affairs. And I also attended my granddaughter's CIF playoffs basketball game. Go Miracosta. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. An excellent report on aviation. Thank you, Jeff. I look forward to serving with you. On February 12th, Mark Vakovic, our Director of Utilities Operations, and I attended the 2020 Water Policy Meeting by the Metropolitan Water District of Orange County. So I, thanks to Mark, I have certainly more knowledge of our water policy and the issues affecting the state of California. This afternoon, the mayor and I and many residents of Newport Island and the staff of our Recreation and Senior Services and our Public Works all attended a wonderful, on a glorious Newport Beach day, the rededication of the Newport Island Park that has been refurbished and updated and cleaned up and made more safety conscious, I guess. And it, it's like a brand new park. And it's just a real jewel, a jewel of an island called Newport Island. And we're happy to celebrate a project that really came up from the community itself. And they have been working with the city for five years now to see these improvements. So I'm very proud that we were, we were there today on a beautiful day. And that is it for my announcements. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I believe I have a screen. My son Cannon and I celebrated a resident's 104th birthday, which was monumental. I presented a proclamation signed by the mayor, who I explained was much more important than I am. And she understood, but she was still grateful for my attendance. Her name is Eleanor Riker, and she's a lovely lady, a lot of energy. And I know you're not supposed to discuss a lady's age, but I've told her I believe she's the oldest resident in the city. And we hope to celebrate next year. So if you do know of someone who maybe is about her age or older and they're not shy about it, please let them know that we would love to pay them a visit and give them a certificate as well. And they can meet my son Cannon or they can meet the mayor. Both of those are great occasions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
Jeff and Diane failed to mention that we, the three of us, attended the press conference in Costa Mesa on Saturday in support of Costa Mesa. The city of Newport Beach has filed an amicus brief that we are in support of them in trying to keep the state from, and the federal government, from bringing coronavirus victims to the fairgrounds. I mean, to the Fairview. So that was one of our activities for the weekend. I also meet periodically with a group of elected women of Orange County. And this time, I met with council members from Fullerton, Brea, Huntington Beach, Elise Oviedo, and Irvine. We always talk about homeless solution strategies. And this time, we talked a lot about the Rena numbers and how each of our cities will be approaching the challenge. They were appreciative of hearing about our three-pronged approach and felt like that was something that they could also utilize. I also had a briefing with several members of the UCI, UCI executive staff, Alberto Sandoval, Chris Leo, Paul De Vega, Richard Demersion, and Executive Vice Chancellor Jeff Leifkopf. And they showed me the plans for a campus hospital and perhaps an art museum that they are developing on their property near campus and jamboree. That's going to be an exciting development for people on our side of the bay. And at that time, we also briefly talked about traffic. And they reminded me that they have an Institute of Transportation Studies at UCI and would be eager to work with us on projections for traffic improvements and things that we might be able to do to help the traffic situation. I, I met with SPON's, at the time, it was called their Good Neighbor Policy Committee. I think they've changed the name of that. But I met with several members of SPON to talk about the proposed members of the Housing Element Update Committee, whom we will be officially selecting tonight. They wanted to know how they were selected. They wanted to know how they were selected, and they wanted to know a little bit about the members of the committee that they did not know personally. So I talked about how impressed those of us who did the interviewing were with the level of expertise and the passion of those, all of those who applied, and give them a little additional information about the people that were selected. I also met with the Homeless Ad-Hoc Committee in Mayor O'Neill's absence, and we will have a report on that later, from Grace, about the staff efforts, but several members of the ad hoc committee are working on partnering with the county on the behavioral health aspects of this problem and how we can partner with them. They're building a psychiatric facility that we hope will help us to give service to the members of our homeless community who are suffering from substance abuse or psychiatric disorders. I also attended the Orange County Tax Luncheon to hear Congressman Lou Correa and Harley Ruda speak. At that luncheon, Anaheim was mentioned several times for their success in homeless solutions, and I'm hoping to get a tour of their facilities. And on that topic, the mayor, staff, and I have set a meeting with a permanent supporting housing provider next week. Is it called Home-Away?
HomeAid.
HomeAid, and that's for next week. That's it.
All right. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a quick announcement regarding dredging. We, as you know, we may have, we are asking for $23 million to dredge our federal channels, and we've been working hard on that. Just wanted to report that the funding for this next year, 2020, we did not make the work list for the Army Corps, but that's, we're still very optimistic, we're still working on it, and these are things that take a long time. So I just wanted everyone to know that that's, that's the state of dredging our federal channels for 2020. But I look forward to 2021 and getting on their budget. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
I stood in for the mayor at a large gathering at Oasis. I think it was the annual meeting, I'm not sure what their term was it for, but gave a brief presentation, but the best part was sitting at a table with some great folks, and my tablemate was Evelyn Hart, and there was a lot of laughter, and, you know, it was just a great experience. Once again, what a special place that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, last few days, most of what I've been doing has been in the news, so I was able to attend the hearing yesterday for the Costa Mesa lawsuit. And so, just a quick update for everyone, the court is going to have another hearing on Monday. She's extended the injunction enjoining the transportation of patients who have either been, who have either tested positive or been exposed to the coronavirus into the, into Costa Mesa until that hearing on Monday. There's quite a bit to be done between now and then in terms of both the lawsuit and then meeting with the state and federal governments, so we will be doing that. And then in the coming week, on Sunday, there's the Newport Mesa Unified School District Spirit Run. We've got the Hoag Classic coming into town next week as well, which will be a lot of fun, and because of actually Hoag and I need to, or the tournament, I need to actually cancel my office hours, so, sorry, Jim. Yeah. So, but just, we'll, we'll put that on the calendar, but I need to do that. And then there are two slides. On Thursday, February 27th, 2020, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., we're going to be hosting a discussion about addressing youth homelessness. This will be in the Newport Beach Central Library Friends Room, and then the next, and then on March 2nd, 2020, in Marina Park Community Center, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we will be having a discussion on Title 17, the Commercial Marina Live Boards. So with that, we will do Public Comments on Consent Calendar. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 16. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Actually, before we hit this item, I need to go back for just a moment, Mr. Muldoon, for A1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my attempt at saving a local business. OC Winery is located in what's zoned as an industrial area. At first, it was there for the purpose of manufacturing wine. It's essentially turned into a place where people go for wine and beer and food at times. They're going to go out of business due to fines and lack compliance if we don't do some sort of change, so I'm going to ask the staff to bring back perhaps a couple options and how this could be done, whether it's a private membership area or whether it's an organization that's allowed to exist purely for the use of food that's not made there and for alcohol and wine serving. I do request that the hours of operation be limited to evenings and weekends, so any schools nearby don't have to worry about interfering with their hours of operations. And I'm just trying to be as flexible as possible with this one, staff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll come into the Public Comments on Consent Calendar. This is the time for council members to announce recusals or pull off, pull items off. Mr. Hurdman.
I have none.
Okay. Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned at the beginning of our study session a couple hours ago, item number four on the consent calendar relates to short-term, the ordinance, that's the second reading of the ordinance relating to short-term lodging. The subcommittee, the members being Mr. Hurdman and Ms. Brenner, and I will, are asking for this item to be taken off the calendar, I guess is the best way to say it, and that the subcommittee will continue to review much, certainly all the public comments that have been received in the last two weeks, and there's just some more fine tuning that needs to be made, and we look forward to coming back quickly to bring it back before the council. And so, is that the form of a motion or just a procedural item?
Yep, so that would, Mr. Avery will make the motion, but I believe that he can incorporate the recommendation that the item be tabled into his, into his motion. Fair, Mr. Harp?
Yeah, that's fair. I think, I think what you're saying is you refer it back to the committee for additional work.
That's correct, and we'll hope to bring it back very quickly. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Muldoon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a conflict on item number 12 due to prior business interests which last for a term after the business expires.
Excuse me, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I have a, I think I have to recuse myself on, I guess it's item number one, three, excuse me, relating to the Lido Isle hedge heights.
Okay. So noted, thank you. Ms. Brenner.
Nothing.
Mr. Duffield.
I have none.
Mr. Avery.
I have none.
All right. I have none. Is there a motion, Mr. Avery?
Yes. Mayor, I move. The balance of the consent calendar items, with the exceptions of no items for pulling except Councilmember Dixon's item four, we're going to do a motion on that.
So if, you might, if I make, so the way, yeah, so the way it would work is we would move the consent calendar with item number four being recommended a continuance, and then I believe there are some recusals.
Yes, so we have recusal, Ms. Dixon, on items one and three, and Muldoon on?
Just item three.
Just item three.
Three, yes.
Okay.
Oh, and then a recusal from Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, of item 12.
Okay.
And may, can I also make a note, I'm sorry, I have to recuse myself on item nine due to real property interests.
All right, so noted. We have a couple amendments.
Okay, and then?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All right. So if you're here on item number four, let me just explain real quickly what the motion is, so you can make a decision on whether you'd like to come up and speak or not. Item number four is the short-term lobbyist, I'm, short-term lobbyist, short-term lodging issue. So item number four is the short-term lodging. The motion that's on the table right now is to refer this item back to the subcommittee at the recommendation of the subcommittee. My suspicion is that the subcommittee will be taking all of the public comment that has been provided in writing and will probably hold another meeting to have discussions with the key stakeholders and the people who have reached out. I would just suggest it's probably better to talk to them directly when they convene than, than, than spend the time right now discussing it, but this is, I just want to be clear, you are very welcome to come up and speak about it, but the item is, at least as it's made, the motion as it is right now. Okay. The motion as it's made right now from the subcommittee would not have any action to advance the ordinance tonight. So I want to make sure I'm trying to make that as clear as possible, because this is, it is not, it's a little out of the ordinary how, how this is going, so I just want to make sure if you are here and you have any questions about what I just said, you're more than welcome to come up, and we'll try to answer them, but I just want to make sure you understand, we are not, if this motion passes, we are not passing the ordinance tonight. It would probably come back to council in a different form from the subcommittee recommendations. Okay. So if you have any public comment on the entirety of the consent calendar, including item number four, please come forward.
Good evening, and I, my name's Colleen Howes, and I'm a 40-year resident of Corona Del Mar, and I assure you, I'm sure you've all heard from me in the last couple weeks over this ordinance, 2020-8, and I really want to thank all of you for listening to us and for considering to change this or go back to the drawing board. That's a great example that you really do care about the citizens here, and I just want to say I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Oh, okay.
On item 16, Howes, I have abundance of caution. I would like to recuse myself on that item, as there are a lot of issues with the code that I need to recuse myself.
Okay. Is that incorporated into the motion, Mr. Avery?
Yes, it is.
And then your second?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, then let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2020-7, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending Title 20 and Title Planning and Zoning of the City of Newport Beach Municipal Code related to hedge heights and front setbacks abutting stratas within Lido Isle. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Thank you. We, we now have public comments on non-agenda items. If you have any public comments on non-agenda items, please come forward at this time.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As you undoubtedly noticed, our community room right across the way has currently been taken over as a voting center for the March 3 election, and so this seems an appropriate time to remind you that, as our county registrar presented to you a few months ago, not only has the county changed the logistics of how we vote, but I believe they also have acquired some new vote counting software that they use, which offers, I assume, a number of other options to the, to the way votes have been counted in the past, including such things as what is called instant runoff voting, which is the electronic equivalent of having a primary election and then a runoff between the two highest contenders. There are a number of variations about, of that. I believe the new voting software they have can accommodate those and other voting systems, many of which would be superior to what we have now, where a council candidate can actually be elected to the council if there's a wide race, large number of candidates. They might be a very unpopular candidate, but they just happen to get more than their other people in that race. So I would again urge you to look into what voting options we have available, because re-reading the charter, I now understand you simply could, could pass an ordinance to choose one of those alternative systems, which I think would be very beneficial to the citizens of Newport Beach in future elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. All right, we'll move to item number 17. I will declare a conflict due to real property interest and turn the meeting over to Mr. Avery.
All right, council, item 17, the ordinance for amendment to section 904380 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to adopt local amendments to the 2019 edition of the California Fire Code. Does anyone want a staff report? Do we have any comment from the public on this item?
And just real quick to clarify, there's, there's actually a public hearing with the building code issues when you're in fire code, you have to have the public hearing at the second reading, so this has already been before the council once, but they have the public hearing at the second meeting, so I believe the public hearing is now open.
Mayor Protem, Avery, and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. When this was first before the council, I expressed some confusion about the reference it made to definitions in Chapter 2. I've since understood what that means. It's Chapter 2 of the State Fire Code, but I couldn't find it in the State Fire Code. It's in, in the State Fire Code as amended by an ordinance that you adopted last fall. I remain confused about the statement in the staff report that in enacting the ordinance, you are by reference incorporating some guidelines. The guidelines are included in tonight's staff report. I don't believe they were in the staff report from two weeks ago. This is the real meat of what is being changed, is the guidelines. The ordinance is not much different about the Fire Code. The guidelines of what people have to do, including the new definition of something called a home ignition zone, that's most of what this is about, and the diagram in here, these are all new. So I'm hoping we could have clarification. When they say this is being adopted by ordinance, does that mean you are approving these guidelines, and they could not be changed by staff without coming back to you, the council? And likewise, it refers to two other guidelines. Are those now being frozen in whatever state you are approving tonight, or are you giving the staff latitude to this? As to these guidelines you haven't seen before, on the bottom of the first page, it's referring to, again, about definitions, the Hazard Reduction Zone, and I noticed that it says to be a Hazard Reduction Zone, as I read it, it has to have on-the-land structures that were built prior to July 1, 1999. That's what the current guidelines say, but the ordinance that you adopted last fall changed the definition, and it no longer says the structures have to be built prior to 1999. So is that something that should be corrected in the guidelines before you approve them tonight if you're actually approving the guidelines, or will that be fixed up by staff later? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Could we get some?
So, I believe Mr. Mosher asked to see the guidelines last time, and so I think they're put in for informational purposes, but those are something that are adopted by staff.
All right. Given the comments, I think perhaps a little discussion on the guidelines would be helpful.
The guidelines are presented as information for the public in order to understand and bring forth the, an idea of how to comply with codes. That's what we really do, is we try to tell them how to do the work so they're in compliance. The guidelines are frozen and adopted with the ordinance, so what we have for guideline G1 is where the changes are. The other guidelines did not change from the previous years. They're the same as before.
Great. Thank you. Other comments here? Any other, any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll take it back, because we have a motion.
We'll move the item.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2020-6, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending section 9.04.380, replacement of Chapter 49 requirement, requirements for wildland urban interface fire areas of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to adopt local amendments to the 2019 edition of the California Fire Code as set forth in Title 24, Part 9. edition of the California Fire Code as set forth in Title 24, Part Nine of the California Code of Regulations, with Councilmember Dixon absent, and Mayor O'Neill recusing himself, the motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item number eighteen, request for qualifications for permanent supportive housing project. This will have a very brief staff report from, this is City Manager Carol Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, we're asking for your consideration for the staff to put out a request for proposals for permanent supportive housing. This is part of our, one of our strategies for dealing with our homeless issue here in the city. I wanted to give you a brief overview, particularly for those of you who haven't been in, as involved as some of the other of you have. What permanent supportive housing is, is it provides long-term housing for individuals who experience homelessness, provides them a variety of services to help them stay in hous, in housing and home. It is not a shelter, and it is an apartment complex. And one of the things I wanted to do was to show you several examples of what permanent supportive housing looks like in communities. This is in our community. This is a twelve-unit permanent supportive housing unit called The Cove, in which the city participated in funding for this, for this project several years ago. This is a permanent supportive housing project for seniors in San Diego, it's sixty units. This is the Santa Ana Village that will be coming online in the next few months, and I'm happy to report that three of our homeless veterans here in town have been, will be housed in that, in that complex, so we're very excited to get those three folks off of the, off of the streets. What we're asking for tonight is for the council to give staff authorization to put out a request for qualifications for a housing, a permanent supportive housing developer. A permanent supportive housing developer is an expert in these kinds of projects. They're experts in affordable housing. Affordable housing has a very complex financing structure, and there are many, many financing resources that need to be used for that, and so we want somebody who has done this in the past and has a great track record. We want somebody who's experienced in working with the community, somebody who can do community outreach and explain what this unit, what this apartment unit will look like, what this project will look like, and how it will impact the neighbors. That's very important to us. We also want to be able to help determine the quality, what this, what this project may look like, and where it may be located, and we can do that with a request for qualifications. In addition, we're looking for up to fifty units, and that is dependent on the proposal we get from the developer. We have approximately between sixty and eighty homeless individuals, and we'd like to see that this could be really a permanent solution to, to part of our housing program. The RFQ can also, also allow staff to tell the developer what kind of permanent supportive housing we want. We know that many of our homeless individuals here in town are seniors. They're over fifty-five, they're elderly, they have a myriad of problems, and they're gonna need permanent long, long-term housing. We have veterans, and we have families, and so we can identify for the developer what kind of housing we're looking for. And one of the other things that's very, very important to this process is, most affordable housing projects, whether they're permanent supportive housing or regular affordable housing, they do require a commitment by the city. Often, cities will, will donate a parcel of land to a project. We don't have a parcel of land to, to, to provide a developer for this kind of project. So, tonight, we're asking for what the city might be interested in doing as far as a financial commitment to this type of, of fun, of funds, and we've identified a couple of housing, of revenue sources that we could use. One is our affordable housing funds, we do have some HOG contributions, and we could use our general fund surplus. So, tonight, we're asking for you to authorize us to prepare and release a request for qualifications for a developer, determine what you would like the focus to be on, veterans, seniors, anyone, it can be a combination of any of those, what the city's financial commitment would be to the project, and if you determine a financial commitment tonight, this is not an approval of any project or a release of any funds at this time. This is just to let the developers know that the city is committed, and this is what we're anticipating our, our contribution would be, but until a final project comes up, we would not be asking for the council for a permanent, for a contribution of funds at this time. So, with that, I, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, yes, I have a couple. Obviously, we've been informed by the state and case law that in order for us to enforce some, for some of our anti-camping laws and other issues that pertain to homeless individuals, we would need to have a bed to offer them. Would this housing play in that equation, maybe a question, Mr. Harp, would this housing play in that equation?
So, this is permanent supportive housing, it wouldn't be for more of the transient users who are camping in the parks.
So, we still would need essentially to provide some sort of temporary, short-term housing for homeless individuals.
In order to force the ordinance, yes.
So, what is the purpose of this proposal, then?
This is for the longer-term solutions to looking at addressing our homeless, because we know ultimately, the, the thinking is that we do need more housing, and have homeless for the longer-term solution, because a shelter itself is also for a temporary stay to stabilize somebody, get them to the appropriate services, and then from there, they should be moving on to something like permanent supportive housing, and that way, that continues the flow into a permanent solution.
So, this is not as much of a state mandate as providing temporary, short-term housing for homeless individuals is, from the federal courts and the state. This is more us looking down the road, and trying to provide a holistic solution to a problem.
Yes, yeah, at the longer term.
And I see some of the resources that are cited here are affordable housing revenues, which makes sense, we use some of those to pay for the veteran house-
The Cove that we have here, that's correct.
That's right. And I see also, we have temporary shelter funds and HOG, hospital funds, the HOG fund that essentially I thought were, I was under pressure, those are for the more temporary.
Those are definitely from the development agreement for temporary shelter. It would be something we would have to talk to HOG if we wanted to convert it over. We think there's, there's a connection, but we can also certainly leave these aside for now, for that temporary solution, which we are still actively working on.
That makes sense. So, thank you for answering those questions, that's kind of what I thought, but I wasn't sure. I would be, this is almost like a study session, because you're asked for a direction as well. I would support this RFP, but quite frankly, I'd rather see, rather see this be done with more private property, and perhaps that's an area that we entitle with no development agreement at all, and we provide these affordable housing revenues, which continue in grants to help subsidize their project, and we use state services that are provided for, and grants for this sort of housing. I'd rather the city not spend the money that we have put aside for the more immediate concerns. On a project like this, I, I believe that housing is the solution, especially by the airport, more affordable housing, and essentially, that's the way that The Cove was done. The Cove was done with financing experts, what we're gonna put an RFP for, and some assistant, assistance funds, and what we had, and then some entitlements. So, I, I support the item, and then as far as direction goes, that's, that's what I would prefer. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hurdman.
Carol, I just, as I learn more about this type of housing, as opposed to shelter housing, I'm learning that there are sources of funds available for the two different kinds of projects, if you will. Are, are we looking into Orange County Housing Trust, for example, and that type of thing, for, as possible funding source for, for a project like this, in Grace?
Yes, yes. The Housing Trust Fund is actually specifically for permanent supportive housing, not for shelter.
Right.
So, that is something definitely, and this is where an experienced developer in permanent supportive housing knows how to assemble these types of financing pieces altogether with that, but absolutely, the Housing Trust is a, would be a prime area.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Avery.
In my tenure on the homeless committee with council, and members of the people that know really this whole situation, it's really something, it was humbling actually to be on the committee and deal with something that's so crucial. And what the city manager spoke of is one of the things that I came away with, that we can't do this alone, and that's gonna take the city, it's gonna take a private developer, it's gonna take houses of faith, and it's gonna take us as individuals in the community to help make this, something like this work. And, and it's, I think, I don't know how any of us can live in a town like this and enjoy the fruits of such a great city without getting behind something like this for people who are less fortunate, and we see them quite often. And this, the experts that have been helping us all the way along in this have pointed to this as a solution, as one of the important solutions for, if not solving this problem, making a significant difference, because one of the myths is, the people that are homeless prefer to stay that way, and that's not true. They prefer not just shelter, but a home, someplace that's theirs. And I think we have an obligation to, and every city does, to find a way to, to provide that. And, and also, my understanding is that a place at fifty or sixty units wouldn't just be a building, it would also be served by many different organizations to give the residents of such a community the help they need to be successful. So, it's mental health issues, nutrition, physical therapy, if that's it, whatever it takes. But, those services are critical component to this, and there are different agencies out there that can provide those. So, I'm looking at almost, that's a basic understanding, and I, and I think it's, it's abundantly clear to me that we need to be an important part of this, the city, in terms of perhaps providing some, some property as we did in the Newport Shores area, and help, and give a developer a leg-up ability to come in and, and come up with something. So, this is obviously a part of that, and this is, we're sort of on the very, very start of the road to get there, and it's gonna take many years, I would think, three at least, five, six, who knows, but we, it's really important that we start now, I feel, based on everything I've sort of learned over these months with this issue, and of course, a shelter's another part of this as well. So, it's not gonna be cheap for, for us, and, but we're, the state, you know, things have really changed, and the state no longer houses a lot of the people that have been out on the streets for a long time, and so now it's up to communities to do it. But, we will only do it with the help of partners, and that's what this, I believe, this is all about, is us being a partner, and then bringing more partners into it to make it work. So, it's, it's critical, and I'm all for it, and I'm totally supportive. And obviously, there's a lot, still a lot of questions, and I'm sure we'll be able to handle those questions, but it's incumbent on the city to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. I've got a, a few thoughts as well. I think the, I think we'll, I think we definitely need to kick this out. I think that the primary focus, given the demographics that we see in our, inside our city, ought to be seniors. I do think that we should at least have a secondary focus also on families and veterans. Those, that's not as prevalent, anywhere near as prevalent in our, on the streets in Newport Beach, and we've also been able to, as you've noted, do a good job of working to house our veteran homeless both inside The Cove already that we have here, and then in another site. So, that's, that's really positive news. I think Councilmember Muldoon makes decent, makes a good point here, and so I think the, the total commit should probably be around three million dollars. The reason for that would be, you're looking at about one and a half from the affordable housing and the encumbered temporary shelter funds, and then we could be able to talk with HOG about using half potentially for, for a permanent supportive housing, and then half for a shelter, if we can find both, either a site or a, or an operator. And then, I think the RFQ should also make reference to, if a package requires more money from the City of Newport Beach, they need to include why and how the money would be used, so that we can at least make an informed decision, and someone's not just deciding not to do this. Before I make that motion, though, I want to go out to public comment. I see no other speakers, so on this item, do we have any public comment?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Clearly, there is a need for this. One thing that is not clear to me from the staff report, when, when the city is asked to make a contribution like this to a private developer, might involve acquiring land or whatever, is the city acquiring any ownership interest in the enterprise, or does it have any other kind of protection of its investment, should the plan not work out as expected? I could not tell from the staff report, or is it just a pure gift and do whatever you want with it? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, coming back. I would expect the answer to that to be part of the package that we would receive back from the proponents. All right, I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation with a primary focus on seniors, and a secondary focus on families and veterans, with a total cap of three million dollars, and a qualification that if more money is required from us, that the developer include why and how much.
I'll second that.
All right. Any other conversation? All right, let's vote.
With Councilmember Dixon absent, the motion carries six, six zero.
Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Do we have any motions for reconsideration? All right, tonight, we will be adjourned in the memory of Kathy Blank. Kathy Blank, a longtime resident of Corona del Mar, recently passed away. She was an educator, businesswoman, wife, mother, and aficionado of the symphony. She was seen daily walking Ocean Boulevard, greeting humans and canines alike, wearing her UCLA sweatshirt and ski cap, and always with a bright smile on her face. She had a long and satisfying history of service to the community, from the AAUW to Youth Employment Service, to Think Together, to the Corona del Mar Residents Association. As her son, Harbor Commissioner Paul Blank told me, she was a better person for having meaningful work to do within our community, and we're a better community for having had her in it. She is survived by her sister Heidi, her daughter Kimberly, her sons Chris and Paul, two grandsons, and a great-granddaughter. We stand adjourned.